All right, it's seven oh one. I'm gonna call meeting to order now that we have Zoom up and running. Uh, we're gonna dispense with the reading of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
So move.
First and a second, all in favor?
All right.
I think, I think I did see an error in the minutes. You had two thousand twenty-three for something, and it's two thousand twenty-four, wasn't it?
I'll fix it all this way.
Was it that? I thought I saw it somewhere. I don't know, here it's somewhere. It's corrected. Yeah.
Uh, West End House will be unanimous. A September tenth to twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting will be conducted at the end here.
Yeah. Right, very end, yeah.
It's, uh, second page, number three. Got it?
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
Yes.
All right, approval of the minutes, uh, for, from August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, with the exception of number three, twenty twenty-four, being, uh, changed from September tenth, twenty twenty-three to September tenth, twenty twenty-four. Motion?
I'll make that motion.
First?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
All right.
All right, um, public comments outside of what we're here for today?
There's the comment here, there's nothing.
Yep, nobody signed in? All right, uh, we're gonna move on to old business. Uh, Mountain Trail Solar LLC, the current status?
It's my favorite application, let me tell you. Um, I'm in, we've completed, I actually counted, we did eighteen hearings. Um, and the, I, I'm probably about three quarters of the way through a first draft on the finance effect, which I'll be getting to the supervisors, hopefully, by the end of this week, because we will be meeting an executive session next Wednesday, uh, to, to, for deliberation purposes.
All right, thanks for the update. Uh, Ron's Construction H and K Group Cement Plant.
I am still waiting to hear back from opposing counsel on that. That's really, at this point, with the supervisors, I don't think there's anything pending for the planning commission at this point.
Okay. Uh, Snyder Subdivision, you get any clarity on what's going on there?
Yeah, I, I called several times and I haven't gotten a response. So at this point, I can't give you an answer because, but I did try to contact them. Do you know Roger Watson or any, any of?
I have their, I was contacted, but that was my old phone number, so I don't, I don't know.
I'll, I'll keep trying.
Do you have your cell number?
Yeah.
I'll continue.
Yeah.
All right, I can try calling too, see if I can get anywhere.
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep going, trying.
Uh, South Skooka Property Group Self-Storage Facility?
There's a variance hearing coming up on that. Uh, I wanna say it's like the first week of October, I think so.
Yeah, the third, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just posted it.
All right, uh, Raywell Real Estate LLC. Um, nothing new on that one?
Didn't you recommend that?
Yeah, I think we, I think we already recommended that.
They recommended that the last, yeah, concessional.
Yeah.
So that's not pending here anymore, that can come off the list.
Uh, Hepner Road Solar One, conditional use hearing nine thirty.
Okay, so we have representatives from Hepner Road Solar here, so as you recall, they were here, they were here, uh, last month, we are convening again this month because we wanted, we wanted to stay on schedule for the September thirty, uh, hearing, um, so they are, they are here. I know Steve did prepare a bit of a review letter, so I don't know if you want us to do a little bit of an introduction, and then I'll have Steve go through the letter.
Would, would there be any benefit to switching the Merkle in front of this, just because I don't think that's gonna take that long, or, it doesn't make a difference to me, but?
Because Merkel, Merkels are here.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, why don't we, why don't, why don't?
That shouldn't take too long.
Why don't we do that, that, that way, maybe then, if they don't wanna stay, you know?
Okay.
There is, there is some scintillating television on tonight on ABC.
I understand that.
Okay. I'm Brian Hopely, I'm with Crossroads Group. We did the survey and, and design for the Merkle farm. Um, we had some comments back from Steve, um, that we've already taken care of. Two of those comments were, is, we had asked for waivers of curb and sidewalk along the Merkle farm. And I have those, I have that waiver with me right now.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Yep. Thank you.
I guess you're the important.
Thanks, Brian. For the waiver. I'm recording my wife.
Deal proof.
Um, also in that review letter, I mean, I can go down item to item, or just shorten this for you.
I can run through it too, Brian, what?
Here, I can give you the plan that has all the corrections already on it.
Yeah, I'm not gonna review anything here, right, I, I, why don't I just run through the letter, Brian, and if there's any questions, you know, we can, we can handle that, but I think we can run through this pretty quick.
Okay.
Um, so, the applicant is proposing a subdivision, uh, there's a forty-four acre parcel right off of Windsor Castle Road, right near the school property, it's on the north side of Windsor Castle Road, it's, it's about forty-four acres, um, the intent appears to be to subdivide off a, uh, about an eleven acre parcel, and that parcel is to, to remain in, in agriculture, so, there isn't a thing that is being proposed in terms of improvements, uh, the, the use is gonna continue to be the same as, as it is now, which is permitted by right, um, so there really isn't anything else that they need to do other than the, uh, the waiver request. There are a couple minor technical things that I'll check that they cleaned up on the plan, but I'm in support of the, uh, the request of waivers, or call them deferrals for, for curb and sidewalk, um, again, no need for stormwater, there's no, uh, proposed improvements, um, so I, I'm, I'm in support of the waivers, and I would support, uh, conditional, uh, recommendation for, uh, approval.
Any questions?
Didn't we approve that last?
That was a similar one, that was, that was a very similar one, right, right on the street.
That was. That was the plan before, uh, the review.
And, and with that one, just to clarify, I think there could be something in the future relative to an actual land development, relative to those, uh, that modified motel or whatever, but that'll, that, that's something totally separate, but with this, I, there's nothing, I don't think immediate that's, that it's going to be proposed. I guess the only question I had, you know, I was thinking about, I, yes, I did say that the SEO should review it, I'm not totally up to speed on what might be required for creating a new lot, if in fact, you need a septic site out here, even though you're not proposing to do anything, you know, I'll, I'll leave that up to the, uh, the SEO to opine on.
That was a woodland road subdivision. This is a, this is a part of high school, you want part of high school.
Gotcha.
On Windsor Castle, it's a different subdivision.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I don't even know if you would get a site for sewer because of the soils that are out here, which is all pretty much wetlands out here. He's just separating good offers on, he likes to hunt.
Again, I, I'm in support of it.
Okay, you would support the, both the curbs and the sidewalks?
Yeah, and just, and just, I, I, this has come up before, anytime we waive curb and sidewalk, it's not actually a waiver, the, the, the township has the right to require curb and sidewalk at any point in the future, we're just saying, at this point, in conjunction with this plan, we're not requiring curb and sidewalk to be installed in conjunction with this plan. If this property were ever developed further, where there were lots, you know, residential lots, at that time, the township could, could require that. I'll also point out that Windsor Castle Road is a, is a state, a state, uh, state highway, um, so, yes, I'm in support of it and waivers.
I move then that we accept the waiver request.
And conditional recommendation for conditional.
Yes.
Condition upon them, me, me reviewing their updated plans and addressing any other comments in the, in the, in the letter that I issued.
Whatever legal way Russell wants to put that motion. Sounds like we have, we have a first.
I do, I don't believe that you did.
Two words.
Yep.
So moved. Steve had it right, so, so there's really, you know, I don't really need to rephrase it, it's, you're, you're recommending the wa, the waivers, um, and then you are recommending approval conditioned on Steve doing a final review and telling the board of supervisors that everything's good as well.
A second?
That's okay.
First and a second, all in favor?
All right.
All right?
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
You're supposed to meet it.
It was actually in person.
Take care. All right, Hepner Road, you guys are up. Thanks.
Would you like us to go over just quick highlights of the project itself?
Is there anything you wanna add from last month? Because, because I think everyone who's in the room, maybe you were.
I was, I was.
You were, John. Um, but otherwise.
He wasn't either, he wouldn't have been either.
Yeah.
Me and him. When, when he first, when this was introduced and what?
No, no, they were, he was, they were here at the last meeting.
Oh, yeah, I was.
Yeah, yeah.
Brian wasn't here at the last meeting as well.
Yeah, so why don't you, why don't you give us just like a, a brief overview?
Yeah.
I did pull the transcript from the last year, so I can hear it, I read it this morning, so I have some, at least some, remember a little, a little bit better what was happening in twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Should I just give a quick?
Sure. If you're, uh, what was approved, I think I'd go ahead and fill in any.
Okay. Uh, so, so back in October of twenty twenty-two, we applied for a conditional use, um, for a five megawatt community solar project, um, community solar being the state program that is still pending legislation, uh, in the capital, uh, still is not passed, um, since then, um, other alternatives for connecting to the distribution grid, um, have, have become available, and, um, and we would like to, uh, pursue the project under one of those types of interconnection. It's a, it's a thirty-eight acre, acre project on a hundred and fourteen acre property, um, owned by the, uh, the Merkles. The, the projects would be, um, connected as a net energy metered project, so, um, uh, it's just selling direct, uh, energy directly back to, um, Med in this, in this particular case.
Just, just a clarification, when I, when I looked at the transcript, when they were doing this back in twenty twenty-two, it was, it was also a net metered project, is that correct?
Um, it, it, not, not in the terms of interconnection, the, the specific interconnection, like, um, classification would have been, uh, community solar, its own type of interconnection, uh, it, it's all really just the, the business end and how they classify the thing, it connects all the same, but, um, uh, community solar is not considered net metered, net metered is, is, um, a standard interconnection that any producer or business could, could have, um, if they have rooftop solar, um, and yes, as they would just sell it directly back to the grid.
Is the apparatus used in community solar any different than the apparatus used in what you're proposing now?
What do you mean by apparatus?
What you're actually gonna put on the land.
The equipment.
The equipment, is it, is it fixed, you know, are you, are you talking about?
Yeah.
Fixed tilt, rotating?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's.
Which one?
Uh, I forget which one this is. It is, it is the same as we originally proposed, um, the only difference would be, um, to maintain a five megawatt system, there would be two interconnection, points of interconnection, um, so, uh, again, that's, that's just kind of, uh, how net meter works, you can't exceed three megawatts, so we'd have a three megawatt and a two megawatt system, um, the solar panels being in the exact same place, the equipment having to be in the same place, just there would be two points of interconnection to the grid.
And would those be like the, the substations, so?
Not substations, just, just poles directly tying into the, to the lines.
Okay, and how, how close to where you're trying to tying in, are, is the property, how long, how far did that have to travel essentially?
The, um, the point of interconnection actually crosses, there's a line that goes through the property, so it's right there.
Thank you.
I think, I think that's it, unless there's any specific questions.
If I may, just to simplify, I think or complicate things, I'm not sure, my name is Jeff Mount, I represent the, the solar developer in this matter, um, I'm sorry I wasn't here last time when they presented, however, uh, the decision of whether or not there was a solar farm has already been established, and that was by a written decision November twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, they imposed, they meaning the board of supervisors imposed four conditions on the project, the first being the passing or enactment of appropriate legislation by the state government of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania concerning community solar programs. As Sean had said earlier, that matter has been tied up in Harrisburg, we don't know when that's gonna happen, or if it's gonna happen, but all other aspects of the project remain the same, so we're asking for a modification of that condition, condition number one, and a removal of that condition based upon the hardship that, we can't control Harrisburg, Harrisburg is, uh, its own animal, as we all well know, and the community solar program is facing, uh, a future where we just, just, just do not know right now, uh, what is in store, so the community solar would allow, uh, and this is maybe a little bit, Sean can maybe explain it a little better, but let me tell you what community solar is to me, community solar is a program where people can go ahead and enroll and receive a discount on locally produced electricity, meanwhile, net meter, there's not that option for people to enroll, instead, what's being produced at the property is being put into the solar grid and sold into, uh, sold into the grid and then consumed by consumers throughout Pennsylvania, not just necessarily here in Windsor Township, so that's primarily the difference as I know it, uh, with regard to community solar as opposed to net meter. But we're looking for that modification request from the planning commission on item number one.
How do you, how do you handle, in your request, section nine seventeen of the MPC, which says essentially that the, that the, your guaranteed protection of the approved conditional use exists for six months, because, because since, since you, since your application, use solar ordinance has been enacted.
Right, we, our, our position is we have vested rights, uh, in that approval, and we rely upon that.
Right.
The vested rights doctrine is what, what we're saying is what we have.
Right, but section nine seventeen says that, that you have six months from the approval, so.
To do what, I'm not.
So.
Can you read that to me, please?
Um, so section nine seventeen prevents, or, you know, I'm not reading these.
Yeah, sure, I understand.
I do have it as an attachment in the, in the letter.
Of course you do, Steve. Let me scroll down then. Um, all right, well, that's the finding effect.
Sure.
Of course, I'm just gonna fill that shorter.
It's attachment, eh, it's a very last page.
Okay.
I figured I'd throw it in there and let the attorneys figure it out.
It's the worst thing you can do.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's something you may not wanna do.
So, nine seventeen, when an application for either a special exception or conditional use has been filed, um, and the subject matter of such application would ultimately constitute either land development, as defined by one oh seven, no change or amendment of the zoning subdivision or other governing shall affect the decision on such application adversely to the applicant, the applicant shall be entitled to a decision in accordance with the provisions of the governing ordinance or, or plans as they stood at the time of the application was duly filed, provided further, should such an application be approved. Should such application be approved by other, by other zoning hearing board or governing body, applicant shall be entitled to proceed with the submission of either land development or subdivision plans within a period of six months, or longer, as may be approved by other, the zoning hearing board or the governing body, following the date of such approval, in accordance with the provisions of the governing ordinances, um, if either land development or subdivision is still filed within said period, such process will be subject to the provisions of section five oh eight, one through four, so.
Here's the difference, the way I read it, is filed versus approved. We've already have approved, uh, a use and proved of a solar farm, and that makes that section applicable, hence we have vested rights in the whole project.
So is it, is it your opinion then, that, you know, considering that the conditional use approval was granted with no condition of, you know, how long that approval was good for, which is sometimes included in the conditional use approval, is it your position then that, that, that approval would last forever?
No, I think the ordinance provides for a two-year.
Not, not for conditional use, the ord, the ordinance, that, I, I went, I went to.
Oh, sure, I, I.
I went, I went to look at that provision.
Okay.
Um, and it applies to variance applications and special exceptions.
The, the, the.
After, so CEUs silent.
So we're silent, so we're here, that's why we're here.
The reason I ask that question is, I'm trying to kind of get at the intent of this section, you know, is it implying that, okay, it's pretty clear that, that the municipality cannot, you know, impose, you know, recently enacted ordinances within that period to adversely affect the applicant, that's clear, once it gets beyond that six months, that's when it becomes very unclear to me, you know, whether or not that gives the township the right to impose the, you know, those, those, those updated ordinance.
Yeah, our position is.
Six months or longer.
Uh, as may be approved by other zoning hearing, yeah, so, there, so because, because the ordinance is silent on CEUs, and because the opinion does not give you any, give you anything, I think, I, my reading of this, and, and listen, we're not trying to be oppositional here, but I'm just trying, I just, I, I have to, the board has to reconcile nine seventeen with your application.
Right, but we're not, we're not filing a new application, I think that's where the disconnect is.
No, no, I don't, I don't think so, because I, I think that what nine seventeen is saying is that you, you have to file a land development application within six months.
Unless otherwise stipulated.
Unless, so, so, so it's, it's not the, the conditional use that's the issue, it's that you, it's that because no, no land development was ever filed, I think that's where the issue comes.
I think, I think that's a separate, separate matter from what we're here for today. We're here for today specifically for the modification of request number one. If there's another provision of this decision, that goes through separate through the zoning enforcement or through zoning officers with, with that, not for the planning commission here tonight, we're very specific as to modification number one.
I think our zoning officer might interpret.
No, I, I, I just.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get.
Yeah, I'm not trying to be, I'm just, I'm just trying to work with you guys too.
I'm trying to understand your position, because, let's play this through, let's, let's say the board grants your modification request, but you, you still haven't complied with nine seventeen, does that really advance the ball anywhere? Because now you, now, now, because, because arguably, they could now, they could now say, well, there's a new ordinance, you need to meet the terms of that new ordinance, you know, and I, and I know I sent you a copy of it, you know, a couple months ago, when, when we, you know, because I wanted, I don't wanna surprise you.
Oh, sure, I appreciate that.
You know, with, with it, but I, I think that, you know, as, as Mr. Hoffman can, can go into more detail, I think there'll be some challenges, and, you know, it's a much more stringent ordinance than existed back in twenty-two.
Understood, and that's why we have an approval from twenty-two, not a new application, I think that's where we have the, the disconnect on, on what we're trying to accomplish here this evening.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm looking ahead a little bit to, to some, to some of the other, the other issues, but, you know, and I want them to have all the information so they can make proper recommendations.
Question, you're suggesting that there be no statute of limitations on, on approval?
I'm not suggesting that your ordinance is silent as to that, so what I would do.
But there's a state statute, there's a state statute.
I would, I would reconcile it this way, I would say it's similar to a special exception, in that they just forgot, just forgot to include special exception conditional uses, and it's up to that two years, that's what the ordinance does not provide, this has to do with filing a new plan, not an approved application, that's what that statute, and we could, and we could.
We could do this all night, you know, and.
That's not my, that's not my intention, either.
Yeah, and I think, you know, just as a general, general proposition, case law does say, does say that essentially special exceptions and conditional uses are more, are more or less the same thing, it's just, it's, the difference really is zoning hearing board hears special exceptions, the governing body of the board of supervisors hears conditional uses, so that's, that's not a, a far-fetched, you know, explanation, that said, we have to also assume that when the board of supervisors, when the board of supervisors adopts an ordinance, that if they leave a type of, a type of proceeding out, they must have done it for a reason, so, I can't, I don't think you can just assume that, oh, well, they must have forgot, they may not have, I don't, I, you know, it, it may have been intentional, there is a state statute, I think, that, that is applicable, and my, my reading of this, and I think it's Steve's reading of this as well, is that this six, what this six-month rule implicates is filing a land development application, you know, not, so, so that, that's, that's where, you know.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
You would?
I would agree with the land development application, that nine sixteen, right, nine seventeen applies to that.
Right, well, I guess what, I guess what our interpretation is, is that because one was not filed within six months, I don't know that you're necessarily grandfathered in, when you go to land development, to, to the prior, to the, to the prior ordinance, I think you're, you're now is gonna be subject to the terms of the new ordinance.
That's where we have the, obviously, the disagreement, so, and that's where we have the vested rights with the decision already in hand.
What are the other three requirements?
I can read them, if you would like me to, or you can.
You can, you can, I mean.
Applicant is bound by the testimony provided at the hearing, which is two, applicant must comply with local, state, and federal ordinances and statutes relating to the development, construction, and operation of the property, and shall provide proof of the same to the zoning officer, and the applicant must obtain a zoning permit prior to commencement of any construction, and must comply with all requirements of the Windsor Township zoning ordinance.
And legally, three and four both apply to as, as, at that time?
I think if you, if you read that with section nine seventeen, I think that when, when this, if this would come back to you as a land development application, I think you, you would be looking at the ordinance that's in, that's in, in effect at the time of that land development application, because we're outside that six months, they're gonna say they have vested rights in the use, but remember, is it, there's a difference between conditional use, which is use of the property, and the actual design, which is land development.
Right.
So they're, they're two, two different things.
Right.
Well, and, and to be fair, and I'm, I'm not trying to be adversarial either, but, um, you know, my recollection of the transcript is, you know, there was, there was a lot of discussion on the, the community solar legislation, now, to the extent, uh, it impacted my review, it didn't really matter at all, because the, the zoning ordinance, the township zoning ordinance makes no differentiation from, you know, community solar or, uh, net meter or whatever, it would be, it would all fall under the umbrella of commercial, so it didn't make much difference there, but, um, it obviously made a difference during the conditional use proceedings, because there was a lot of discussion about it, and evidently, it was, to the extent that it became a, a condition, that the, the board, you know, wanted that, that, the passage of that legislation as a condition, and, um, on page thirty-seven of the, the transcript, I think it was in the first three lines, you know, there was a comment that was made, um, that, you know, basically this project couldn't happen if that legislation didn't happen, and, again, I, I, I don't, I, I testified in that, in that, um, that hearing, and then was excused, but then evidently, there, there was quite a bit of conversation and discussion on, on the, the passage of the community solar stuff, that's obviously never happened, so, I, I think, to me, one of the biggest questions is, the importance of that community solar legislation being passed, what, what was the importance of that to the board, so much that it, you know, it resulted in them wanting that condition, because that, that never happened, and that was evidently pretty important to them, so, it really, so, I don't, I don't recall this planning commission really having, I, I don't know if we had a recommendation one way or the other.
I don't remember.
For this, I don't, I don't think we did, because I, you know, there was some comments in, in my review letter, it was, it was, the application was submitted as a conditional use application slash sketch plan, so I, I had, I had some comments in that initial letter that were more kind of sketch plan related, basically, you know, deferring some of the, some of the more technical stuff to, you know, the, the, the land development phase, and, you know, there, I, there really wasn't any discussion, if at all, on, on the community legislations, I don't, I don't think we weighed in on that, and I really don't think it's necessarily anything that we have to weigh in on, um, but evidently, it was something that the board, the board of supervisors considered during the, you know, during the hearing, so, I, that's kind of where, where I'm at, is, that must have been important, that legislation, now that it's still pending and hasn't passed, that, that's.
And I think it was, the applicant was very insistent on that, on that, and I, when I went back at the transcript, you were convinced that this was passing momentarily.
Yeah.
And, and, and so I, I think, I, I think that that was, it was largely driven by, this is what the, what the applicant, the applicant wanted, community solar, um, I think it would be helpful to understand, and, you know, and maybe you've already said this, what, if, if at all, are the differences, you know, to the township and to, you know, the neighbors, you know, if you, you know, versus, if you're doing community solar versus what you're proposing, because may, maybe, maybe there is no difference.
From like a physical presence standpoint, there's. From, from like a physical presence standpoint, there's, there's no difference at all. Um, and, and Steve highlighted a really good point. We were convinced that, um, community solar was going to pass, and at the time, there was no other mechanism to have interconnection for a five-megawatt array. Um, any, anything above, um, don't quote me on this, but anything above like two megawatts is, is, um, uh, considered community solar, and there is no existing program, or there was no existing program. And, um, and, and now, now there is availability through net metering, through, um, through recent developments, uh, I think through some, some court cases and stuff.
So, when you, when you testified, and I think it's on page twenty-seven of the transcript, uh, that the net meter option was limited to three megawatts?
Mm-hmm.
If it's a commercial, I guess, net meter system? You're, you're, from what you described earlier, there's gonna be two interconnections that allow that. And again, this isn't any, this isn't a zoning issue, it's, it's not a, a saldo issue. This is something they would have to sort out that really doesn't impact the planning commission's decision on that. But is that something that's changed that allows that to, you know, be split into, to two interconnections? So, you have a two and a, and a three to, to, you know, because you're, you're coming in with a, a five-megawatt system essentially, and you're saying now it's gonna be net metered, which is limited to three, but you're allowed legally to split that up, as you're saying?
Yeah, there, there's recent case law.
And I'm asking that because I just, I'm ignorant, I, I, I'm not saying you can't.
There was recent case law that, that dove into that deeper, and I'm not the expert on, on the specifics of that. But the outcome of that is that, yes, you can have, um, two co-located systems, that, uh, you know, as long as they're not greater than three megawatts each. And, and to, to talk more about like the, the nitty-gritty differences between community solar to, uh, and, and net metering to like the, the local, uh, public, um, again, the, the physical appearance of the system is not any different from, from one versus the other, except there might be like a couple of extra poles for the interconnection, um, because there's two interconnections. The, the electricity is sold, in net metering, the electricity is sold back to the grid, which is MedEd. And, um, MedEd customers within the MedEd network can purchase energy directly from MedEd. So, you're still able to buy solar energy, um, from the, the electric distribution. It's, it's, the, the only downside now is that because community solar hasn't passed, there's not a specific mechanism for a discount for subscribing to that solar energy.
So, without community solar, there's no discount for, for local enrollment? So, we can't give the residents of Windsor Township or any municipality where community solar was proposed that discount of five to ten percent, was it?
Uh, I think we were saying ten to twenty percent.
Yeah, that's, that's always.
Okay.
And, and because it's going back into this, into the MedEd system, it can be sold anywhere within MedEd, which is not necessarily.
Windsor Township.
Not, not gonna be here, I mean, I think MedEd goes out, you know, to other states.
Yeah, and it was the same for community solar too.
Well, I thought the, the testimony that you, that you had given was that it was local, they would stay, stay local, I think.
Local meaning the MedEd distribution network, and like incentivized even farther by like a, a radius.
Yeah, I don't, I, my, my recollection from what I read this morning is that's a little different than what you testified to in twenty-twenty-two, but.
Like his testimony, I.
It may not, and it may not be, it may have been.
Yeah, the O C under representative, Tim Mills.
Yeah.
And, and he was, he was far more knowledgeable of the proposed community solar legislation at the time.
Yeah, okay.
Steve, I have a question, excuse my ignorance. On page three of your September sixth letter, um, item three A, you talk about ordinance one twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, um, in the two different sections. And then, uh, item B has the right to impose the required, requirements of the ordinance. Does that relate to us here?
I, I, I don't think it necessarily does, and, and this is what we were discussing earlier, that, that, you know, the implications of that, that section nine one seventeen of the municipality's planning code. So, the municipality's planning code is, is a, is a, a state, is state, state law essentially that dictates how municipalities, um, need to handle certain things. Of those things, you know, right there south, there's no ordinances, there are subdivisional land development ordinances. And, uh, so, in the absence of some language in our ordinances, sometimes we'll defer to the, you know, this, this state legislation, the municipality's planning code. So, really, I think it's, you know, relative to comments three A and B, um, I think it's pretty clear to me that the, the township isn't required to impose this most recent ordinance update. The question is, do they have the right to do it? You know, so, to the extent that that impacts what, what we need to do here as a planning commission, it might be, is, you know, maybe we just wanna defer to the, you know, defer to, to Russell and let him have further discussion with, you know, the applicant's attorney, or maybe we need, maybe they need to go into executive session with, maybe Russell needs to go into, in, in, in executive session with, with the supervisors. Um, but, yeah, I'm, I'm reluctant to tell you to do any more than that, because I, I, I don't, I think that's kinda beyond, beyond the, the planning commission's role.
Can we make a recommendation?
You can make a re, your, your role here is to make a recommendation to the board of supervisors on the application.
In the event that state or federal law regarding solar would have changed from the hearing date in twenty twenty-two, do you then get to, by right, follow whatever the state and federal rules were in twenty twenty-two? Or do you need to comply at the time of building? Not, not local, state and federal?
I don't know, it was the, from the engineer's standpoint, sorry, the legal standpoint?
The legal standpoint is this point you start building, I'm sure.
Are you talking about permitting?
If they, I mean, they're, they have maybe conditional use approval from us, but in our, in our language in three and four, they must abide by state, federal, and local laws. So, if, if we're saying that they basically can earmark, I put my application in on twenty twenty-two, so I only have to abide by whatever rules were in place in twenty twenty-two. If we're saying that's Windsor Township's, Windsor Township's rules, is it also the state and federal rules?
So, let me, let me just clarify something for you. Conditional use is about use.
Correct.
What you're talking about is about design and implementation.
So, zoning and land development?
So, so, so land, yeah, zoning and land development, that's.
Hasn't started yet.
That hasn't, there has not been an application for that.
Correct.
So, I think the answer, I think the answer to your, to your question is that what's in place at the time is what, is what's applicable, and that is one of our conditions. And they have not asked for a modification of that condition. So, state and federal laws as, at the time of building is what would be applicable.
For, for example, the, um, N P D E S permit, we've, we've already obtained one for this project. It's general permit, and it will re, be renewed under updated guidance at the end of the year. I, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't think it actually is gonna impact the design at all, but, um, that, that would be one example.
So, just for clarification, are you then building one five-megawatt system? Or are you building a three-megawatt system and a two-megawatt system, and you're building two separate systems within the same footprint as originally proposed?
To MedEd, we are building two systems. We are, we have applied under one application for land, for, um, zoning, meaning, uh, it's, it's, uh, one name, I forget what the name is, Hepner Solar One or something like that. That, that is one company for the entirety of the system. There's one fenced area, um, it, it's, will be indiscernible to, you know, anybody walking by that, that it's two systems. There's just gonna be two points of interconnection with two meters, uh, and, and it's only two in that sense.
Correct. So, I think if it comes down to whether or not we're doing community solar or net metering, I don't know that anyone here really cares. But it comes down to the, the interpretation of the rules, which is above all of our payrolls, except for those two guys and you. So, I mean, as far as going to net metering, I don't have a problem with it. But I think we need to make a note in our motion that, uh, we're essentially putting Hepner Road Solar One LLC on notice that it is our understanding, based on our interpretation, that you will need to comply with the new ordinance that was put in place at the beginning of this year. And you should probably review your plan to see if it will function within those rules. And then ultimately, that will come down to, like, your counsel and ours figuring out what that interpretation looks like.
So, is that, you're making a motion?
I'm putting it out there for someone else to make the motion, or, I mean.
You gotta repeat it and say that.
So, would the motion be that?
We're making a recommendation to the supervisors.
I have a question though.
Go ahead.
Is our, if we would recommend it, and then it gets stopped in the land development because of the new ordinance?
It's just semantics at this point.
So, it, 'cause it.
This is about use, not about design.
Yeah. And, and the other, the other thing is, even though the, the, the new ordinance would severely restrict what they can do, it's up to, up, they could still do something.
They could still work.
You know, so it's not up to us in that respect to determine whether or not it's infeasible. Even though I might have used that word in here, as, you know, it appears it might be, but, you know, that's up to them to make that decision.
They can design around the ordinance.
Exactly, sure.
So.
So, I, I make a motion that we recommend it to the, to the supervisors that we accept the change from community solar to net metering. However, we put the applicant on notice that we believe it's our understanding that the project must comply with the new ordinance that was put in place in January of twenty twenty-two.
Upon the filing of the land development plan.
Correct.
Yeah.
Second.
First and second all in favor? Any opposed? You got what you came for, but.
I got the best news.
I wish I could fight for another.
Well, uh, I, I have questions, though. You, you did review the, the plan under the lens of the new ordinance?
I, I didn't, I, I, I didn't look at every s, for example, there, there was quite a bit of, uh, new, uh, new requirements relative to decommissioning and some other things. I did not go through everything in the new ordinance with the fine key, fine tooth comb. I stuck with the ones that I thought were gonna be most problematic if you guys were gonna proceed.
Yeah.
You know, and the setback things, you know, the setback items seem very problematic, you know, if, if you guys are going to proceed.
Do you guys have a copy of that yet?
We do, and, and I reviewed it, and I, I had a specific question on, um, does the new residential setback apply to participating parcels? Meaning, the owner of the larger, like a solar parcel also owns a smaller parcel immediately adjacent, uh, under the same name?
Is that the small parcel right along the street, right along Hepner Road? It's like a, kind of a wedge-shaped property? Yeah, I didn't include that one when I looked at that. I, the, 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 the most problematic property is the small square property right along Hepner Road. I, it's, uh, Morel, I believe, is the name?
To the, like, the northeast of the road?
So, just a question. If somebody is willing to basically waive the right to that distance requirement, and then they come in for a variance, basically with the property owner saying, I'm okay with it being closer.
Yeah, so I didn't include this one.
Then that would be a variance, right? So, if there's certain, yeah. So, if there's certain setbacks they can't beat, the property owner's willing to allow it, then.
And all these.
As long as the zoning board.
Residential strikes. I was in Ohio, so the class of rise that comes in once a month. You can say it's agriculture, but it's gonna be seen as accessory to, to the residential.
Okay, but, yeah, my, my main concern was the, how you're gonna.
I did not include this one, I assumed that that was part of it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
It was mainly this one, but once you offset that five hundred feet, that's, that's the problem. But I would encourage you to look at it, you know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm starting to see, I don't think you think. But I was, I was unsure of that one.
Okay.
Nope. Sure.
All right, anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Go through this.
Any other new business? Uh, planning commission concerns, any alternates for the planning commission? Is that, that's not over from last month, because we have the new guy, or did he bail already?
At, at one point in the past, we actually had two ordinance.
Okay.
So, I just put that there, is that, is that something that we'd wanna consider? And that's why.
I think that's probably not a bad idea. Seems like we're dropping like flies. Is the new guy on for sure?
He's busy, he was busy.
All right.
Yeah.
Ben said that, eh?
Yeah, the colleague was maybe, 'cause he's in agriculture and, you're chopping corn.
Right.
So, he indicated that he would not be able to attend because of, uh.
We need more farmers that don't farm.
Unless you're retired. Now, maybe two would be a good idea, because.
Yeah.
Especially on short notice, what if one of us says?
Can't make it.
You can't make it tomorrow.
Yeah.
And someone has plans.
Yeah, most townships have some alternatives.
Yeah, I think we can keep it, keep it on there then. So, anyone has any, uh, any friends that you'd like to have join?
I have zero.
That's belong.
Mr. Merkel.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn on that note.
I'll make that motion.
A first and a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you, everyone.